Town Council for the 22nd of September at 4:30. So not start time, but here we go. Start with planning commission decisions. There is, there's one Class B and then there was one work session. Any questions? Questions only, we're not going to discuss. This is a pending application or a current application. So no discussion, we'll get to it if this passes or fails. We'll see it in front of us. If you have anything, you know, any serious concerns, we'll have to wait until it finishes its run. So, but staff's here for questions.
Eric, not a discussion, just to comment. I'm sure impressed with our planning. I mean, the staff and the commission and their discussion. It's that, that was very interesting to read.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with you, Dick. It was well done. Anything else on planning? Excellent. All right, let us move on to legislative. We start with bolt enforcement ordinance modification for first reading this evening. Tim?
This ordinance changes the structure for the conduct of bolt revocation, suspension and revocation hearings. What it, right now, the finance director, Brian, is supposed to or is the hearing officer. This ordinance, if adopted, would change that so that Rick, the town manager, or his designate would be the hearing officer instead of Brian. The thought behind this ordinance is that we need to make certain that there is fairness in this hearing. And it just struck us at staff level that having Brian serve as a hearing officer reviewing the testimony and records of his own employees that work under him was a problem. And while yes, just about every other employee except that the town attorney and the municipal judge actually worked for Rick Olman. It does provide another level of insulation. And I think it will, if the ordinance is adopted, I think it'll make the hearings fairer. So I think that's what it does.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim?
Who might be an example of a designate for Rick?
I'm sorry? Shannon?
Shannon, okay.
Jeffrey?
You know, Aaron, in theory, in theory, Rick could designate somebody else. We've not contemplated going as far as a third party independent kind of hearing officer, you know, where you might hire an attorney to act as a hearing officer. Our ordinances don't contemplate that right now. So what, what the town manager designate is really intended to is to allow Rick to ask, is that the right word, Rick? To direct Shannon to do some of the hearings.
Okay, great, thank you.
Carol? Hey, on, I have a question. On an average, how many of these hearings do we have a year?
Very few. I mean, we may, we probably, you know, we could have one under a typical bolt license, which doesn't, you know, where somebody may have intentionally put fraudulent information or something on, you know, bolt application. But those are rare. I don't even know when the last time. The more, the likelihood of having them would be related to short-term rental violations as we started to ramp that program up more and try to look for more compliance. And, and that's really what prompted us to look at this because, you know, we've had some turnover in that short-term rental compliance position. And we really are, you know, we really want Brian to work very closely with whoever we hire to make sure that, you know, that we're, we're getting that program the way we want it to be. And so him having such a close, they, you know, close relationship with the day-to-day operations of that program would create a problem for him then being a hearing officer on it. That's what prompted us to really look at this. So I would, even with short-term rentals, I would be surprised if we did, you know, more than three to five a year of these things. That, that'd be a lot probably, so.
Thanks, Rick.
Carol?
That was my question.
All right. Other questions, Dick?
I like the change of calling each day that they're out of compliance, an additional infraction or whatever the right term was. But I think that was a great change and, and I think it's a lot cleaner this way. So nice job, Tim.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we will bring this to first reading this evening. We have a resolution in support of Summit County ballot measure 1A.
I mean, I can go ahead and take the lead on these next two really there. We spoke with, to the council at the last meeting about your desire to look at a resolution that would support 1A. So, you know, we've, Tim has prepared that resolution. You have it in front of you, basically, in a nutshell, it kind of de-Gallagherizes Summit County, which is, lines up with what we've seen happen with CMC and the fire districts in previous years. I think if I remember correctly, there are 17, maybe 17 of these right now, this November statewide county type questions occurring statewide. So there you have it. And we also gave you some additional information Shannon sent out again, trying to help you understand the ramifications of Gallagher and the reduction of, you know, from, what are we, 7.1 something to 5.1 it's going to be reduced to that number, so.
Eric, I'd like to point out, because we've got a couple of new council members probably have not gone through this resolution process. State law provides that the only way that a local government can, can speak with respect to support or opposition to a ballot question that's on the local ballot is by the adoption of a resolution. We cannot spend money, public funds to advocate. That's specifically not allowed. So since we can't do that, what the council has done from time to time, and depending upon the nature of the ballot question, has adopted a resolution in support of certain ballots. And that's, that's why we're here with this as opposed to some other way to try to urge the adoption. We, we cannot spend public funds. We can do the resolution.
Thanks, Tim. Questions?
Hey, Rick, so this just allows the county to maintain the revenue, the current revenue from, from property tax? How's that all work? Like if, if this didn't pass, would they have to refund it or what? And it does this, would this raise taxes at all?
It won't, it won't increase your taxes, but it won't decrease them either. Okay. So your taxes, if, if this weren't, if this weren't in place or if it failed, property taxes would go down. Residential property taxes would go down, which would result in that loss of revenue to the county. They're asking for them to stay locked in at the current mill levy rate that they are today.
And what would it do to business tax or business assessment?
It doesn't impact that. That by statute is set up to stay at.
29%. Does everybody understand this well enough to vote on this tonight? Dennis?
We're supporting the resolution.
Yes, but you understand the, everybody understands both sides of this discussion? And really, it's a pinch between Gallagher and Tabor is really what part of the problem is on this for the, for the county. That's really where a lot of this issue is.
Does this affect our revenue, Eric, or Tim?
No, it doesn't. This is just the county's, this is just the county.
Jeffrey, the, the problem that Gallagher has caused is for entities, governmental entities who rely heavily on property tax as a, as a source of revenue. And that is not a big source of town tax funds. So no, it wouldn't affect us. You might want to, everybody ought to know too, there is a ballot question on the November ballot to repeal the Gallagher amendment. Don't know if that will pass or not. If that passes, then these other local ballot issues probably will not be important.
And, and you said that, or maybe Rick said that there's 17 of these things going on across the state? 17 of these ballot initiatives? Is that the right number?
Somewhere in that vicinity, yeah.
Okay. So back to your question, Eric, the way that I understood it is that if, if it does get reduced, we'll lose some funding for wildland fire protection, public health services, mental health care, open space, road maintenance, all of the above.
Correct.
But when, when you say, when he says wheel, it's the county that will. County. Yeah.
I mean, it's things that we have voted on as a community that will get affected, impacted. And Mike, you know, my ongoing question, which I think was answered pretty well in the, in the, in the slide packet that Shannon sent out today, which was really very helpful, was what's the difference between the increase in property value versus the decrease in that percentage that you multiply your assessed valuation by? And it turns out that the decrease, the increase in property value is not as high, so they would lose money. My, my concern was that, well, with the increase in property value, which is one of the things with that, that increase in, in overall property that gets assessed, that's what drives that percentage to keep the mix between commercial and residential at the 45, 55. It's really a, it's really pretty confusing. That's why I want to make sure everybody is comfortable doing this tonight as opposed to taking some more time. But if everybody's good, then, then we will put this up for discussion tonight. Yeah, Rick?
You know, it will impact us directly financially also. Many of the things that, that were passed and voted on are dollars that will impact things that we pay into. For instance, you know, the pre-K, the, the pre-K money has lowered the amount of tuition assistance that we have to do because that money is there, which saves us dollars for our program. The amount of money that we fund into the 911 communication center has gone down because they use safety first dollars to help fund some of that communication center, which frees up money for the town to use for other things. And there's some other examples of things like that that, that directly save us town dollars, so.
I would just add to that, that the mental health piece is just so critical right now. So to your point, you know, if, if that got reduced, I, I would feel fairly certain that this group would, would.
They'd be knocking on our door. Yeah. All right. Good. Eric, we'll move on to the next one.
Colorado River District ballot issue 7A.
So this one is again, this is a resolution to support this. We are one of 15 counties, being in Summit County. We are one of 15 counties that are represented by the Colorado River District. And the River District is actually, they're not looking, they're doing the opposite of what the county is. They're actually, in order to, to close the gap that they're going to see with that reduction in residential assessment, they are looking to actually increase property tax. And the increase is $1.90 per 100,000 valuation. So, and you know, in the memo, it laid out what all of that, the River District and, you know, the services they provide. And it's, they play a key role in trying to protect, protect our western slope water rights. And so we were asked by Northwest COG and the Colorado River District if we would do a resolution to support this ballot question. So we're, we didn't have a chance to talk to you about this before, but we went ahead and prepared a product to you for your consideration if you want to leave it on for tonight.
All right, questions?
I just, I just wanted to mention one thing because when I saw this come through, I didn't really know what it was about. So I started Googling around and there's, you know, Aspen is sort of, has made it sort of a contentious issue by saying that we don't really know how the money would be spent and that we don't know if the projects would be, would benefit us. And that's not really true. I mean, there's a financial, there's information that is laid out and they have adopted this financial plan for where the money would go. And one of the big things, like their number one bullet is that they would work with local, I guess, just local leaders to identify projects. They had a few projects that were identified in their bullets. And it seems like it's a fairly clear and simple plan. It didn't seem like there's anything nefarious or, you know, they're not planning to like reroute water or have new dams everywhere. I mean, I felt like the Aspen article made me super concerned. So if you Google, if you Google it, just sort of take it. I guess there's some history there that I think has maybe provided them with a little lower level of trust and interest in working together. But I think I support it.
I should add that Karen is the, as the county commissioner is our Summit County rep on the River District Board. And she asked for everybody's support at the last mayor managers meeting, right, Eric? I believe she brought it up. Yeah.
Kelly or Rick, you know, I don't know if, Kelly, you came across her, if you know, Rick. I, you know, it states necessary projects to protect the quality of life, you know, and it continues on. Are those projects defined anywhere? Because Kelly, you hit exactly on my concerns. I mean, could those monies end up going for a new reservoir or something like that?
I think Jesse might, I mean, she's on here, she probably knows a lot more than I do. But there was, they had a project list, they have a couple of projects listed, like one sounded like a new water reservoir type. Jesse, you're on mute, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't prepared to speak on this topic, but the Colorado River District was established by statute and they, they do protect western water rights and projects. They do a lot of conservation planning and they do a lot of work around mitigating the impacts of trans mountain diversions. I'm going to, I'm going to get the names of the projects wrong, but most recently, I know some of Summit County and Frisco at least were awarded some money in a settlement with Denver Water that the Colorado River District helped broker when Denver Water was working on their, their new, I believe it was the, the, what's the name of the reservoir? Gross Mountain, Gross Mountain. So anyway, long, long story short, Dick, I don't have specifics, but they, they, they're not out there building a lot of water storage and trying to kind of hoard Colorado River water. They're out there trying to, to protect the water interests that, that we as a community have and then also protect in-stream water rights so that we can honor our downstream obligations to lower basin states.
So they, we did identify at least one kind of reservoir project, but that wasn't really in our area. The thing that was nearest to us, that I found was in the Glenwood Canyon, the Shoshone Water Facility. Just, you know, it's outdated and it needs to be maintained. And so I think for now, that was the closest to home project that I saw. But yeah, like you said, Dick, they're not planning to create a bunch of diversions and route water all over.
Okay, so you guys are comfortable from an environmental standpoint that, that we're, that's kind of, that's kind of not, not in the wheelhouse of this group. They're, they're more the protecting that.
Yeah.
I believe, yes.
Good. Other questions? Okay. Natural, National Energy Efficiency Day proclamation. Is this you, Jesse?
Yes, and I am prepared for this one. Mayor and council, thank you. I want to thank our sustainability intern, Emily Niederbrummer, who brought this forward to us to help bring recognition in the importance of energy efficiency. October 7th, 2020 marks the fifth year of this annual awareness event. And as you guys will consider in your budget for 2021, the town of Breckenridge has been a longtime supporter of Energy Smart Colorado and Resource Wise, which was formerly the Sustainable Breck Business Program. Both of those programs help residents and businesses evaluate their energy use, reduce energy use and thereby save money, cut pollution. And it also creates local jobs for our, for our contractors and our, and our energy efficiency specialists. The town has also undertaken some significant energy efficiency measures through lighting, switching over our lighting to LEDs. And we have also, the council adopted the Sustainable Building Code earlier this year, which sets very, very high standards for energy efficiency in new construction. Since 2018, the town has saved 4.2 million kilowatt hours of electricity and over 15,000 terms of natural gas energy by implementing these energy efficiency programs. And just to put that in perspective, that's the equivalent of about 4,000 acres of forest sequestering carbon. So it's one of the major strategies we have towards achieving our 100% renewable energy goals. And we will do some outreach and promotion to help residents and businesses understand the options available to them through Energy Smart and Resource Wise. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Anyone? Do I have to read this whole thing into the record?
I think that's a Tim question.
You're muted.
Tim, you're on mute.
Sorry, the, yeah, sorry, this is a proclamation. It does not require council approval. Under the council's rules of procedure, the mayor has the authority on his own initiative to issue proclamations. So no, Eric, you don't have to read it into the record. You can summarize it instead.
I will do that.
It would be nice if you read it though, wouldn't it, Tim?
Well, that's up to him, Jeffrey.
Pass it off to the pro-Tim. These guys are always a mouthful. All right. Public projects update. Thanks, Jesse. Shannon, what do you got?
What do I got? I have one thing in addition to the memo. I've been working with Hyder, they've really helped me out on the Broken Lands Bridge repair.
Oh, cool.
Think we're going to land around $300,000, which is great. It's a little bit lower than we had thought, and I can cover that in the capital fund. Appropriation. So I want to update you on that and then. On the rest.
Awesome.
Basically, she's going to use some money that was appropriated for some other projects that we're not doing now. And so we, if we decide to do them down the road, we'd have to reappropriate money. But there, there's certainly nothing urgent that we would be jumping on. There were three relatively minor projects.
Excellent. How many trailers are we expecting out at the airport property with our Lego, Lego house of?
I think we have 16 currently, and that's the maximum.
Oh, that's a maximum at any one time we can have.
Yeah. We fenced an area and they should be staying in their fence. I haven't checked on them today, but generally that's where they're going to be. And they should be added there by the end of November.
Okay. Now it looks, I mean, it's really cool. I can't wait to see it go up.
It is.
Anybody on the call listening, do not freak out. You'll get freaked out at first. Don't get freaked out, it'll look good when it's done. It's not just going to be concrete. That's the way it starts.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for public projects? Everybody understand the other stuff that's going on?
I have a question about the public wifi.
Yes.
So in the terms overview, it says, we collect basic personal and device information when you connect to our wifi. The owner of the venue also has access to this data. Who is the owner of the venue? Is that the town of Breckenridge? Oh, Chris, I think you're on mute too.
IT guys shouldn't be pulling that one.
Even I make mistakes. Right now, this is kind of a test pilot. So right now that data is ours. So we can export all of the data that's collected, which right now is first name, email address and a zip code. But we can eliminate all of that completely. We could just make it a splash page where you just click okay and people just are able to join the network and have access.
Chris, at some point, will it be possible for the BTO to have access to that front page to list events coming, attractions kind of thing?
Yeah, we can go that route with it, absolutely. It's really, I kind of put something in place for you guys to have eyes on it so you can see what it looks like. It's been about a week since some of the wifi access points have been up and we've had 162 people join the network. What I'm seeing is that people actually get to the splash page. So around 325 people get to the splash page and then opt not to enter their information to join the network. So it's kind of a double edged sword, having, having a splash page and collecting data because it discourages people from joining the network. So we really need to see if it's more valuable to have data or if it's more valuable to get more people on the network.
I'm going to say it's more valuable to have people on the network personally. I, you know, you think just now for a zip code would be, just so we could sort of track where the users are from? Or is that, do you think that would do the same exact thing?
I'm not sure. We can, we can do that and test and see what happens. You know, without testing, I couldn't really answer that.
I mean, I would think that a zip code isn't going, people's biggest fear with giving their email is it, they, just all the junk email everybody gets, right? And that it's going to get sold or whatever. I don't know. I mean, by giving a zip code, do, is there that much concern, do you think? Chris?
I don't know. It needs to be very, it would make it really easy for anybody to just enter any five digits. So we really enter a realm of just getting worthless data. I think it's really, I think it would be more of we collect name and email address and zip code, or we just don't collect anything and see the kind of buy-in we get from people joining the network.
I'd be doing that.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be in favor to get more people on. I would also be in favor of a splash page that says, if you can read this, wear a mask.
Yeah, we can, yeah, I spoke with Haley about it briefly and like I said, this is kind of just the pilot and we can add any type of marketing message that you want to that splash page, so.
Ask over your nose.
Where is it up, where is it up and running now, Chris? Where could I check it out?
Surrounding the entire Riverwalk Center and going down the entire Main Street alley. So if you walk from Town Hall and go towards, you know, the Welcome Center.
Yeah.
Main Street Alley and then keep going down towards Kenosha, behind Starbucks, it's all accessible there. That was kind of the low hanging fruit for deploying the network. We're going to do the more difficult areas in the coming weeks.
Cool.
So Chris, do you just have to know that that's available? Because I was just at the Crown two days ago and I was using my phone and I didn't, I mean, there's nothing that pops up that says like Breck wifi available or anything.
You know, it's really depends on how users interact with networks around them, right? I was astonished that we did no advertising, have no signage and we have 170 people join the network in the last week. So I think it's more of how people, if people know about it, they'll try to join it. But I mean, were you outside the Crown, in the back?
In the back, yeah.
Right, yeah, I think it depends how your device is set up, right? So you can have your, the wifi on your phone not alert you that there are available networks. Some people have their phones set up, so it does alert them that there is an available network to join. Other people's just, people are just searching because they don't want to use the data on their cellular plan. So really depends on the user, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
Everybody good with just trying to get more people on the network right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Other questions, gang, on public projects?
Nope. Shannon? About walking somebody, I'm sorry. Shannon, on the fiber 9600.
Shannon, on the Fiber 9600, the crews that are actually doing the installation of the vaults on the easements, is there any plan or is it part of their contract? Are they gonna re-vedge where they've dug up?
Yes, they should be. If there's some you're noticing, Dennis, you can shoot us an email, and we'll make sure that we'll hit those. Okay. In a nice vegetated area.
Yeah, it's, instead of being re-vedge the way it was, it's just gravel. So thank you. I'll talk to you about it. So I got.
All right. Any other public projects questions? No? P and T? Anything? Any questions about the traffic, massive traffic volume?
Unbelievable.
Yeah. It's been crazy.
Last weekend was up 8% over last year at Tiger Road.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
It felt like it. Okay, last call. Housing and childcare update. Hi, Nicole.
Hello, everyone. So I'm on here today because we had a committee meeting on September 8th. The minutes were included in your packet. They were a little more lengthy than normal. But specifically, you know, I'm here to obviously answer your questions, but also to discuss the business buy-down rental program that we had chatted about a couple meetings ago. I've been working with Corey Burr on kind of setting, and the Housing Committee on setting up some criteria with the goal of launching early next week and kind of having a two-week application period. And we put some details in your notes and wanted to get some feedback from you guys. You know, I think Dick and Jeffrey had some really good input on kind of how to structure the program. We have eight units available, one and two bedrooms. Some are furnished, some are not furnished. So that's, you know, I like to hear your guys' feedback if you're in support of kind of going out and getting applications starting next week, and any other feedback you guys might have.
Thanks, Nicole. Questions? Jeffrey or Dick, do you wanna?
What's?
Yeah, I actually asked Nicole to get me kind of a one-pager on these units for sale, and she'd sent it to me, and I'm gonna send it out to the restaurant community because I just, I just really think some of these are just great units for a first person, for a first buy. You know, for a workforce person looking, you know, to try to get the first place.
But Dick, you're talking about for purchase, right?
Yeah, I'm talking about the buy-downs, not the housing helps, but the buy-downs.
No, well, we need some direction. We need some
On the rental?
On the rental program. So specifically, specifically, we, you know, how how little do we want to charge? Is a good word to say it, you know? I mean, a typical, you know, if we, even a 60% AMI on a one-bedroom is somewhere between, you know,
It's like $900.
$900, which is crazy. So we could do, and there's a big difference in some of our one-bedroom units. So we'd like a little bit of a leeway. A one-bedroom wildflower is a much different unit than the one-bedroom at Highlands Green. We own two of those, I think, right? And, you know, those are pretty high-end one-bedroom units over there. So they ought to be probably, you know, 100 or 200 more than maybe what we're charging for wildflower unit.
What type of lease would you be talking about, Rick? How long?
Three to nine months.
Okay.
I would, I would think for one-bedrooms, you know, I think our target spot would be, you know, 1,000, so maybe 800 to 1,000 for one-bedrooms because I agree with you, you know, that there should be some differentiation between, you know, those units. And then for a two-bedroom, I would think, you know, in that 1,500 range, maybe 1,400 to 1,600, kind of, something like that. I know it's not scientific AMI. I'm just thinking in relation to what I'm hearing, bedrooms are costing, you know, the workforce. And, you know, I'm kind of right in that realm or a little under-market maybe there. They're only eight units. I don't want to, I mean, I'd love to go really low, but unfortunately, we don't have enough of them to, we're just gonna set people up for disappointment if we do that, create too much demand that way. So, you know, I don't know. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, let's go, Aaron, and then Dennis. Go ahead, Aaron.
I know that we're not talking about charging the mortgage, but what is the mortgage on these? What's the monthly? How much are we paying? Or did we just buy?
We bought them, yeah.
What would the mortgage be?
So really, what we're covering are the HOA dues and utilities, and we'll continue to pay those. And those really range from high twos to in the fives. Really depends on the property and what they include in their HOA. For example, Wildflowers dues are much lower than Highlands Greens dues, which include amenities like a pool and hot tub. So it kind of ranges right now where our costs are really carrying costs month to month on the HOAs and their utilities, and then any repairs and maintenance that might come up. And so our, you know, our goal is really to cover those, and it's so, it's way less than, you know, what actual rent would cost. But our goal is to, you know, cover those costs and then a little more for repairs and maintenance that will have to happen after tenants move out.
Aaron, the sales price on these that we're trying to sell them for is, what, Nicole, like two, two?
It ranges?
High twos, the midish, high threes?
Yeah, and the minutes in the exhibit B, you can see what we're trying to sell these units for. The wildflower is down at $239. It's a one-bed older unit. And for example, a Gold Camp, the two-bed Gold Camp, sorry, I have to read this chart, is $389.
What if we did this, you guys? What if we? So I'm gonna ask you, you know, because I want to try to do a special meeting a week from today, next Tuesday morning on the 29th, and to go over some funding programs with our nicotine tax. And what if we brought back a outline of what we would propose for each unit? Because we're familiar with the units, what the HOA costs are, and then we can do it at that meeting, and you can say yes, no to that. And that's, because that's where we want to start taking, then we can push it out immediately the next day and start taking applications for interested businesses. And I think we're trying to see, right, if a business is interested in master leasing, they'll use for that period of time, and they'd put an employee or two in them, so.
That's definitely the goal, is to do master leases with businesses. In the business, we're proposing a business would pay the security deposit, be responsible for the tenant that they put in there. They'd select the tenant. They'd be responsible for that piece. So that's, that's the goal, is to work with the local businesses. And then they can select kind of their lease terms, whether it be three months, up to nine months, is what we propose.
Very good.
Is the group okay with, oh, go ahead, Carol.
I just had a question on the application process. How are we gonna work with businesses? Is it a first-come, first-served, or how would we run the selection and application?
I think, so we've talked about a couple things. One would be a lottery if we had more applicants than there were units. If there are more applicants, we've talked about priorities, you know, but first, obviously, for businesses and what types of businesses. The committee said that there's an interest in prioritizing childcare and teachers. But there's obviously other types of businesses. That's another question for you guys. If you have other thoughts on priorities, which we can bring a list along with the rental rates to that Tuesday meeting. But that was the other thought, is there a priority based on business type or just a straight-up lottery? That's kind of randomized.
You know, I'd like to, I don't know if it's even possible, but I'd be, like to talk about possibly incentivizing the renters, whether it's a master lease or an individual renter, once the lease has completed, to incentivize them to actually, now that you've lived there, maybe buy the place. And I don't know how we could do that, if there's any sort of a percentage.
Well, we could. We could apply all their rent for purchase.
Yeah, I mean, you demo skis, you demo skis, you know, and the demo price comes, is applied to the purchase of the skis. Sometime, if we could do that and still cover our costs, I'd like to look at that.
That'd be interesting.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Very good.
I like that.
That's a really good idea.
A job-posing committee member.
Yeah.
My question would be, if we're gonna rent these units, are we gonna take them off the market?
Yes, we'd have to take them off the market for the period of the lease term.
I guess, you know, as we looked at this, we have the possibility of some three-month rentals. What does that give us? Wouldn't it be better to rent them for more than a six-to-nine-month period? Or is there three-month rentals?
So this is more about their term with their tenant. The reason we allow for three months is for truly seasonal employees. You know, I don't think that's necessarily the target, but that's usually kind of the, what you kind of see in a restriction is you can see as little as nine months up to, or as little as three months up to nine months. But we can definitely adjust those terms if you guys would prefer like a six-to-nine month. I think it was really just to tailor to the needs of seasonal workforce, since we don't really want these occupied for more than nine months, so we can put them back on the market.
I mean, three months might be applicable in the summertime, you know?
No, it seems like from this timing, six to nine months makes a lot more sense.
I agree with Kelly.
Enough to come back with some rents and?
Also, I don't know if this would be possible, but if we could go beyond childcare and teachers and maybe being like, giving priority to any nonprofit, anybody who works at a nonprofit. I know that they're gonna be going through a lean, lean time the next nine months. So if that would be helpful, you know, for some of our partners in the community, I think that'd be awesome. I don't know if it would work out that way, but.
But those wouldn't be master leased by a business then, would they?
Well, if the business was a nonprofit, that would.
Be master leased by a nonprofit.
They could if they would.
I think, I totally agree that, you know, that they definitely are partners, but every business in the community is a partner right now, especially, especially in the time we're in. I would hate to, I would hate to use, I would hate to single out childcare providers and then nonprofits, and then the business community is really not invited into this. I would rather just open it to all of them, do it as a lottery. This way, I mean, we are all partners right now. I know there are times it doesn't feel like it, but today, and for this winter, we need to help our business community as much as possible. So I would like to treat everybody. Okay, move on. Everybody good? Thank you. Let's move on to this maintenance policy discussion.
Well, I put the detailed notes in there because I do think it's a complex discussion. The bigger discussion is scheduled for October 27?
We're bringing it back to you, Eric.
But I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have. I do think it's nice to have a taste of what we've been discussing at the committee level before we bring it to you guys as a work session topic. But are there any specific questions that you guys have about that?
I just want to say, oh, go ahead, Carol.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, just how it's being formulated here. Would you mind just running through an example for us? Like, say someone at Valley Brook does a significant improvement to their windows, like how that works against the real estate commission? Could you just talk us through an example?
Yeah, so kind of tried to spell it out in the notes that, you know, each, each, I kind of could go back to the start. So we have what I call kind of the preferred covenant, and a couple years back, we crafted this covenant with a 2% fixed appreciation and a pretty low real estate commission. And we did that kind of thinking that we need to start integrating maintenance. Wellington being an example of needing incentives for maintenance. And so as we crafted a new deed restriction, we were like, okay, we want to start thinking about how do we incentivize maintenance in the long term. So in Valley Brook, every one of those homes are on our new covenant or preferred covenant. And so in that scenario, they would have an amount that they could use towards maintenance. It would be, we're recommending 3% of their purchase price. And of those listed maintenance items, you know, they could apply that to any of those things as long as they're qualified maintenance item. So for example, we have items that kind of are at different times of year, and we're trying to keep it simple. They kind of age out at different times. So a roof is gonna last longer than kitchen appliances in terms of when they'll go out. So if someone were to redo their windows, they, and say they did it like five years ago, they would come in and they would say, okay, here's my proof of payment. I did these windows. And that's within, say they use all their 3%, say 3% is $15,000. That's what they would use that for. And then the next owner would have an allowance based on their purchase price as well. That would be that 3%. It wouldn't impact the real estate commission for that neighborhood because they're on the new covenant. In the Wellington, we're recommending, instead of trying to change covenants, giving them the option to to use some of what's allotted in the real estate commission for maintenance. So they could use, for example, Wellington 1, there's a 7% real estate commission allowance. They could opt into kind of a maintenance option, or they could use like 5% of that for maintenance and 2% towards real estate commission. But it would be an option, not a requirement. Each owner could choose to kind of use that because we've had a lot of, I would say Wellington's the neighborhood that we've had the most conversations with regarding maintenance. They're 20-plus-years-old units, and things like roofs are kind of starting to fail. And so this is what really sparked this discussion is that, you know, we've already kind of met our max in terms of our housing costs, and now we have to replace a roof. And so this is to kind of give people an option to do those things and incentivize some of that. So that's, if that's kind of helpful.
No, that's super helpful, and thank you for talking through that, Nicole. And I think it's a great idea, especially with these older homes, townhomes, to definitely incentivize. My other question is, did you consider, I know it might get a little complicated in the formula, but any form of depreciation, like some of the items, roof, window, siding, or even the seven-year items? If someone waits till six and a half years, do they still get the full value?
That's a really good question, and it's something we can talk about more definitely as we get to the main discussion. I did actually propose a depreciation schedule initially. What I learned as I started doing calculations is it gets really, really complicated. One, to do the calculation because you have these lists of items, and as it sells, items are still depreciating, so it's really hard to communicate with an owner. This is what you're gonna get when you sell. Right now, you kind of have your appreciation formula, and it's pretty straight, it's straightforward, quote, you know, air quotes. But I do think for our inventory, it would be really complicated with the resale calculations because it would be depreciating every single month. But it's definitely something that's being done, and something that we can look at. And I can kind of show an example of what that would look like at our next meeting. I think this is, I think we're kind of balancing simple-to-understand with kind of that depreciation methodology, but it is definitely an option, and we did look at it. I think the biggest concern was if someone went to sell their home right afterwards and someone had done all of their maintenance, what, do they have to sell for less? You know, does it kind of put them under with financing and stuff like that? But it's definitely an option that we can look at further.
So we need to move on, and we're gonna have a much larger discussion about this. So we need to move on. And we're going to have a much larger discussion about this. Nicole, could you do some examples when we see this in the pack and next?
Definitely.
Done in other things. Okay. Are we talking about, break studios, Rick?
That's up to you. I, here's the deal, counsel. We keep, you know, we're getting public comments, which is fine. I know Jeffrey had weighed into staff and Eric last week or earlier this week that he is reconsidering whether this is the correct project to do. I think he would, he probably is ready to side with Eric and, and not support this project right now. I had a conversation with Carol. She has some further reservations about moving forward at this time with this project. And so, you know, you've got three out of seven.
You know, I'll tell, I'll tell you what my concern is. I'd like to see what this community looks like in nine months, twelve months' time. I think we've been kind of lured into a, lulled into a false sense of complacency with this great summer business that we had. And I don't know what's going to happen this winter. So I, I just think there's just so many unknowns. We're doing the, the parking structure, we're doing other things that's going to require our time and our money. And I know, I know it's a housing fund, so it's going to be there. And I just, my thought would be, I'd like, I'd like to give it a year, a year or nine months and then talk about it. I, I, I think this thing is, for me, it's been a little bit of a, of a hurry up type scenario. And, and I'd like to see what happens with the town. I, I don't, I don't think we can go on considering business as usual. So yeah, I, I love, I love the, the concept. I, I'm not sure about the location, but I definitely have some concerns about the timing.
Carol, did you have the same, similar concerns, correct?
Yeah, my concerns were definitely similar based off timing, not knowing what's going to happen locally. And also some stemming from traffic flow and design, the location, if that would create a choke point at the south end of the lot. But really the main concern is timing, seeing what's happening in the community, how hard we're hit this winter.
Is there any thoughts in changing their minds?
Well, I have a question. What is the timeline looking like now? I feel like, was it the last meeting where somebody said, we don't know, we have to hear back from these guys who are building it and?
Well, I, I mean, it's going to be slowed down a little, but it's not slowed down that much. I mean, I think the plan was still, we don't have final numbers. We're nowhere near looking at a contract yet because I said that we would not, where that the town is not going to consider or enter into any contract without a guaranteed maximum price that we would have to have before we would do that. So we don't have that information. But my guess is we're not slowed down that much. I think you're still going to look at a winter build and you're still looking at something that would be completed at some point, you know, next early summer or some point in the summer. So you know, tip, here's what's hard from my perspective, from staff perspective, is that it feels very, we don't typically enter into housing projects like this, right? It's not, we're not four, three on housing projects. We're all in, we're excited. Housing is supposed to be a good thing that we're doing and that we're excited about for our community. And this one is challenging for us because I, I'm just, you know, we're trying to make decisions on doing it. You know, we ordered up a six thousand dollar energy analysis with a company called Deeper Green because we have to have the, an energy analysis done in order to submit a grant to DOLA to try to get funding for the net zero. And I'm afraid to spend six thousand dollars because honestly, I don't know if I'm flushing it down the toilet if we're going to do this project or not. And it just seemed like every week, you know, we're, we're kind of changing or doing something on this. And I think we've either got to decide it's going or we got to put it to bed. And, you know?
Just to add to that, Rick, I, I think there's some confusion in this because some of our, the comments that we're getting, you know, are calling it a design build. I, you know, yes, we're using the same firm, but we're not design, we're not signing a contract before the design is done. You know, we're not signing a contract and, and doing this with, without the details, at least I'm not in supportive of it. I, I, as I spoke at the last meeting, you know, with some of the concerns on some previous projects of our, you know, of, of the builder, I want to see a lot of details. You know, I, I think this is, this is, you know, a somewhat new product for him and his group. So, you know, I, I'd be perfectly comfortable just, just telling the, the builder that we want to slow down and, and we really want to see the details of this. And including all the, the things you guys have mentioned and, and as well as the things I mentioned last week. I, I, again, don't want the timeline to, to, to drive the project. I want the project to drive the timeline, you know? I, I really want to make sure, you know, we do our due diligence on this and get it right. I, I still believe in the project. You know, Jeffrey and Eric, I, I totally agree with you. This is going to be a tough winter. And we really, as we get into our budget discussions, we need to be very, very prudent with that. But, you know, this money is earmarked for housing. And, you know, we, we, this is, this is not going to drain the bank account. It is a sniffing amount of money. I don't want to sound that it's not, but I, I feel it's an important project. However, not so important that we're careless and, and do it too quickly. So whatever that timeline means, if it makes everybody more comfortable, if, if the, you know, you know, we also have kind of strung the, the developer builder along and they are continuing to spend money on their own nickel designing this thing. So in fairness to them, I, I, you know, I kind of think we need to give them a little more definitive input, give Rick and, and his team a little more definitive input to be able to fairly deal with the, the, the contract we're working with.
Dick, I think you gave them great input last, at the last meeting for, for that side of the discussion. I am a hard no. I'm a hard no. I, I do not see this going forward for me in any version at all right now. Whether it is waiting a year or just putting a fork in it permanently and finding a better location for this kind of product. So, but I think you did that last week. I mean, I don't know what more you could say to the developer other than what you've already said. And that, this is on them. They don't, you know, if they feel that with a four, three going, today they're at four, three. If they feel that this is too risky for them, they should just stop what they're doing. So, Kelly?
Well, I think Dick put it really well. I support this project and I'm really excited about this build. I think it has a lot of cool aspects that help some young professionals in our community. But I also, I mean, I'm perfectly happy with revisiting this next summer. I don't feel like there, we need to do something immediately. I'm really excited about what Nicole's put together for renting out those buildings that we already own. So I think that has some great potential for, for a number of spaces this winter. So, I mean, I support the project and I don't have issues with it. I do want to ensure that it's a very high quality build, just like we've been talking about. But if the council would, like if it would be more supportive and like Rick said, if this would be more, if there would be more interest in revisiting this next summer, I don't feel pressured to make this project move forward over the winter. I mean, frankly, I don't really, really understand why we would embark on a building project over the winter when you pay premiums for people to be working outside in our climate. So I'd be happy to just put it off until next summer. I don't think that that would be a big deal in my mind.
Erin?
Well, Kelly said a lot of what I was thinking, so she, she took a lot of what I was going to say. But I, what I'm hearing from the group, I think is a lot of location too. So, yeah, I think, and I, and I agree with what Rick said about four, three votes on, on our community housing projects and it's not that feel-good feeling that we, we want it to be. So I'm, just like what Kelly said, I'm open to pausing it for a little bit. And, you know, if we, maybe at the beginning of the summer or spring, revisit this and maybe revisit some other locations too, so that the design doesn't fully go out the window. But perhaps there is an in-town location for a project this style. Because I, I do fully believe in this idea of low, low rent, small units. I, I just, I wholeheartedly believe in the concept to get people to, you know, save money and, and invest back into our community. So anyway, I'm, I'm fine with waiting and continuing the conversation about these.
Dennis?
I support the project and the concept, but I am fine with holding on for six to 12 months to see where our economy goes.
Rick, does I?
I hear put it on hold. So that's what I'm hearing. So that's, yeah, I have that conversation. I think, I think he's listening in anyway, so he's hearing it. So, yeah, we'll see what happens with it. I mean, it could be a whole different look or something different. Who knows? Next summer, next year is going to look different. So we'll see. I do want to, do want to create some separation on our land over there. I think we're spending money to have that. Right now, we're having the full, what do you call it, Nicole?
Survey?
Survey. Thank you. Survey done. And there, I'd like to do something that would, like get our open space to do a buck and rail along there or something that would kind of fit within that area to keep so we're not having parked vehicles on town land and, you know, snow. They shouldn't be pushing snow up into our space. And I think kind of at least show what that, that line is so it's not used for other purposes than an open space, which is what it is right now. We don't allow people to, you know, park and do things on our other open space. So.
And also I think that would, that would give us a better idea of how that property functions on, on its own. I think there's a blurred perception in my mind at least about what, what is town property and what isn't. So yes, having a, having some sort of designation of, of how it is, how it is back there as far as the ownership, that would help.
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. There is really no committee reports other than Summit County Transit. Any questions? No financials? Quickly, financials. Brian?
Yes, sir. We can go through it pretty quick. Our expenses are tracking with our reduced budget. So no real news there, but as most people are interested in, our most recent net taxable sales for August, we compiled the numbers and the taxable sales were up nine point seven percent over 2019. And real estate transfer taxes also at nine hundred, nine hundred ninety thousand dollars for rent versus a, a budget of three hundred and sixty eight thousand for the month. So we're seeing, you know, we saw a really successful month, both in terms of the activity in July and August retail wise, and rent has also been, you know, doing a lot of catch up. So that is influencing our, our projections and things like that for 2019. And that's all stuff we'll be looking at in a few weeks.
Make sure you take into account as you're thinking about the winter though, that the street's going to be closed and the street was probably thirty percent of a lot of restaurants revenue and really did assist in a lot of that retail sale. So.
And do you ever, would, i- is it appropriate, appropriate to take into the, kind of the diminished parking as well as because of the north corner lot? Is that just something that, not in a financial?
That's really up for the winter, you're talking, Jeffrey?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, would that something that Brian would factor in or no?
Here's how we're approaching the winner from the budget. So we're, we're looking, when we build the 2021 budget, we're looking at, so we, we feel like we know what we can do in the summer, right? So we're going to, we're going to budget summer months pretty similar to what we were actually able to do this year. We're going to budget our peak, we're budgeting December, January, February, March at a forty percent loss of revenue. That's how we're going to enter this. And so we will, you know, we'll, we haven't, we'll have it, we obviously have August. You know, September and October are pretty low months for us. So, you know, well, I'm not sure where exactly we, we landed on that. We'll try to replicate. But those, those won't be big numbers either way, you know? You could go plus or minus 10%. It's not going to make a huge difference in that. And so that's how we're approaching what we're going to project for 21. Obviously, we're going to come out ahead in 20 because we projected, you know, a thirteen million dollar loss back in March. And we made budget appropriations for that. So, you know, we're going to be way ahead of, of, of that, which is good because that'll just give us a little bit of cushion for the unknown that we may feel, that we may experience. Because, you know, we haven't had a good couple of weeks in Summit County, people. And, you know, there is a chance that we could be going backwards right now. We're level two safer at home. They don't want to go level three if we don't get a handle on this recent uptick. And, you know, there, there is a COVID fatigue going on and people are getting more relaxed and, you know, letting their guard and their mask down. And, you know, all those kinds of things like that re- most recent, you know, thing that happened locally at a business here, that affects us all. That affects our ability to move to a higher level of opening. It impacts, we were close to going from level two to level one on the dial. And now we're not. So now we've got to step back for another two to four weeks and get a handle on this thing. So.
I cannot stress to you how important it was to go to level one for a lot of businesses in this community. To move from fifty percent, fifty people occupancy to fifty percent occupancy is a big deal. This is a huge setback. And it's a shame because I think the moves that we have made as a community have led to these great sales tax figures that we have for June, July and August, even though June was down, we still beat what we thought. And July and August were fantastic. And some of the things that the community did worked. And, you know, the guidance was correct and we just cannot let our guard down. And I, I think the message to the community has to be what Rick said. Do not get fatigued. I know this is difficult. The school thing is so hard for the kids right now, but moving backwards right before winter now is, it will be the death of some of the businesses in this town. We must get that message out as a community. You've got to keep doing the right thing. We were on the right path. And this is stuff that just happened in the county. This is happening in town, in our town. So that's why it's really frustrating.
Which is why I'm going to recommend, you know, that we don't, the CDC just released guidelines that says they, we should not be doing traditional trick or treating or trunk or treating or anything where to encourage kids walking around and handing out. There is other low risk activities that are described. And I sent an email, I think countywide, we should not do anything that promotes traditional trick or treating. This is not the time to do that. It's better to use that as a message of how important it is that we continue to be vigilant, I think, because of the uptick that we've had recently. So.
Eric, Rick, well said. We got it. We have to stay the course now.
Plus, look at all the money those people in the Wellington saved on Kansas.
Oh, yeah.
Brian, one thing for you is real nice job on that executive summary. That's the first time I had a chance to see one. And it's really pretty clear and it makes it easy to, to understand. So thank you and your staff.
Thank you.
I just want to echo and reinforce Eric's comments and Rick's. I, you know, Halloween is one of my favorite days of the year. It always was when my kids were little. And it's so hard to think no trick or treating, but I, I just think we, we've got to be cautious this year. You know, to Eric's point, there's some segments, you know, whereas we had a great July, there's some segments in, in Eric's and my segment, the restaurant segment, I mean, was down twenty. some segments in Eric's and my segment, the restaurant segment, I mean, was down 24%, I believe. You know, that, you know, the inability to go to Level 1, you know, for smaller restaurants in this town, could very likely be the death of them, and for the bars. So, you know, this is just, the need for us to be vigilant and to fight the COVID fatigue is huge.
Yep.
All right, anything else on financials? Yeah?
Well, I was just, because trick-or-treating was brought up, what are the next steps with that? When will decisions be made?
Well, I mean, I'm telling, under manager's report, I was gonna tell you that my recommendation is that we don't do it, that we are a leader, like we were on the mask, and that we say we're not gonna do it in Breck. We expect by Thursday, something to come out of the state for, you know, that would follow the CDC guidelines and not recommend it. But, I mean, you know, I don't, do we wait for them? I can't imagine how they would go against the CDC guidelines and say, it's okay to do traditional trick-or-treating. And I don't think we, as a community, right now, should plan on doing traditional trick-or-treating, so. And if you feel differently, then we'll need to schedule some time to discuss it, I guess.
What is non-traditional trick-or-treating?
Well, non-traditional would be like Kelly and her neighbors, you get a couple of people, and they do a little gift thing with their kids, where they'll set the, you're not going up to a bunch of strangers' homes and getting candy from people. You're putting, I think, when you read the CDC recommendations, you develop a goodie bag within your house, or you do a scavenger hunt. You know, you have a scavenger hunt where you're not going around. You do different types of fun things with them dressed up, but, so.
Thank you.
That's about as creative as I can get right now.
Why don't, why don't we, everybody, well, it's gonna come out. I mean, does anybody have a problem with this? And I know this is a, this is sort of a big decision to just get thrown in your lap, but... Everybody okay with this?
Yeah, it's, it's...
If something changes, we'll talk about it, okay, Eric? If something changes.
Okay.
If the state, you know, if the county comes up with some idea or something different, we think it's worth exploring, and let's have a conversation and see what it looks like. But I've already talked, and I think most of the other communities are in support and saying that we shouldn't do it, just like, you know, when we tried to not have fireworks and those things. Countywide, we're trying to be unified in this, so.
Very good. All right.
Not a harder decision when you think of the cost to our community.
For one night.
And Dick, we'll make you a little bread bag, so you don't miss Halloween.
I want to see how much candy Jeffrey can eat in one fitting. All right, CIP. Brian, is this you?
This is Shannon Smith.
Shannon, is that right?
Okay, do you guys want me to try to share a screen, so anyone still at home can see this, or they can also just get the packet off of the website?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and pull up the document? And so as we, as staff, looked at this, what we tried to do was minimize the number of projects that we were gonna plan for in '21. There are some on there that we feel is important to leave on there, some of the roadway resurfacing stuff that needs to get done. You know, the dog park drainage is becoming a health and a health-safety issue for us over there with what's being found in the water coming down, so we felt that's important. There's some previous funding in there from the Wellington neighborhood. My point is that we, that's a pretty low number, I think you would all agree, compared to what we typically do. We wanted to, we wanted to keep that low, because that is not the time to be planning for bigger projects in '21. Even if things got worse, we would typically go out and bid our resurfacing in February, maybe, what, early March, Shannon? But typically February, because we want to lock in these contractors before they get busy. If, we can always reevaluate. Eric, we're gonna, you guys know we're gonna get a fill for December and January, right?
Oh, yeah, we'll know.
Yeah, so by early February, if you're really nervous, and we're far exceeding those 40% reductions that we projected, we can go in and reexamine, but put it on hold and bump it out farther, any of these things. So, you know, there's still some flexibility in there, keep in mind.
Question?
I have one for you, though, council. I neglected to put in $45,000 for the solar renewable implementation. Back in March, we had cut 2020 from 90 down to 45, and then we were gonna also do $45,000 for 2021, and I missed that when I assembled this, so I didn't know if we have support to add in another $45,000 for the solar. I can also B-list it if we are getting nervous. Like, I B-listed now some of the fiber repaving that we would have to vote to add back in in, say, February or March.
Dick?
At that number, at $45,000, I'm okay putting the solar back in. I'll have some comments when we get to the bigger list.
Everybody all right with the $45,000?
Yeah, I think it's really important we don't lose too much momentum. I mean, just takes about two minutes of looking at what's going on around us to know that that needs to be one of our priorities moving forward.
I'm good with leaving it.
Adding it? Dennis?
In, yes, in, sorry. All right, keep going.
Okay. So unless there's questions in the capital, the next part of the table is the parking and transportation projects. Again, like Rick said, we followed what we did in March with cutting a lot of things. However, you'll see the highlighted ones are ones I think need a bit of council consideration. We added in that $50,000 that wasn't present in March, because we got a grant from CDOT to work on the design and implementation of e-bike share. So that $50,000 is our grant match to begin the design phase. So that was an add. The Riverwalk and pedestrian connection planning could be moved out if it's council's desire, that is, to do the last phase of the South Gondola along the river and connecting into town. And then also, we added back in, under Sidewalk Master Plan, the sidewalk connection and crosswalk up by Christie Heights. But we did not add back in the Warriors Mark sidewalk segment that had been cut in March. So I know I said those all at once, but we can take them one at a time.
I will just add that if the e-bike grant match allows us to access about $800-plus thousand in grant money to build an e-bike docking program here in town, so I think that's money well spent, that spend 50 to get 80, over 800. If we have any hope of wanting to complete the last phase of the garage and Riverwalk access project in '23, we probably need to do the design now. Shannon has concerns that it could be a long design process, because the river's involved and the Army Corps is gonna get involved. And so we need probably a 24-month period in there to be planning for that particular last phase of completion. So that's why we went ahead and put it in in '21.
How's everybody feel about this? Dick?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I, I'm supportive of some of this, but to Eric's point before, I, you know, I think we need to be very prudent with our budgeting for this winter. It's gonna be a tough winter. So, you know, I don't know if we go to an A and B for some of this, and, you know, if we are looking that we're gonna be worse than 60% of revenue, as we're talking about budgeting January, February, March, then, then we, you know, we do the skin-down version, which to me is really just the resurfacing in that 1.7, you know? But, you know, if we are making that budget and we feel that we can afford it, I think to Shannon's comments, I think it's really important we do the $300,000 in planning for the Riverwalk and pedestrian connection. Rick, I guess I wasn't aware of the 50 leading to 800, so I'm all for that. I think that's good return, and...
Apparently, I made a mistake. Dick, I apologize. I got a text from James, and staff quickly corrects me when I make a mistake, so. It's a 50-50 match up to $800,000. So, the 50 grand is just design of it. Design the system, and that would include us doing 50, and then the grant would match it for 50. Based on the design, we would decide, I'm assuming, if we wanted, how much more, if we want to go forward with accessing more of the grant money, which we would do a 50% match on to actually implement the bike share program, so.
Well, again, I think to start the planning process, that 50,000, that is worthwhile. The sidewalks, you know, that, you know, we've been talking about that sidewalk up on Ski Hill forever. So, again, if we, you know, if we're in that, making that 60% of revenue of those three first quarter, I would be in favor of that as well.
And can we move that to a different year? Like, with the Warriors Mark sidewalk, can we move the sidewalks to a different year instead of digging them off?
Well, we, we did move them out to a different year. Moved it out to '25, right?
Yeah, it's '25. So, Aaron, we pushed sidewalk work in March out to 2025.
Okay.
We can infill in closer years as we get more comfortable with what's going on with budget, over the next season, but...
Keep in mind that, keep in mind that the council policy requires us to earmark, you know, the three years of CIP. Because if they're serious enough to be on the list, then we should, basically, you're securing money to pay for those. So some of those, we pushed out beyond that three-year window, so that it didn't affect our bottom-line fund balances.
You'll notice that 2025 is loaded with a lot of those projects, so they don't fall off. It would be, hope that some of them move back into closer years.
And Ski Hill, the Ski Hill crosswalk was, we were gonna do it this year, and we postponed it because of COVID, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Most of these ones, we'll have, most, none of these, we're gonna bid right away. We're not gonna go out and find some design consultant for the Riverwalk and pedestrian connection January 1st. So, I mean, we can commit to waiting until February to start bidding and, you know, getting these things lined up. By then, we're gonna have a feel for what December and January felt like, so.
Question would be, is the Ski Hill Road sidewalk crosswalk, is that tied to the parking garage, or is that tied to the Riverwalk and pedestrian connection?
Neither, it's up higher.
So this one's up by the Nordic Center, Dennis?
Ah, okay.
It's where the bus congregates, Dennis.
On ski, got it.
We're caught that lineup of people constantly is standing there on that unimproved shoulder.
That's a public safety issue right there, for sure.
Probably anywhere, it is a, it is definitely a, somebody's gonna get killed up there, just with the amount of traffic and the people that stand up there and how they're waiting for stuff.
I'm good with leaving all three of those in then.
Can I ask a question, Shannon?
Yep.
I know it's your preference to repave and make sure that everything's buttoned. Maybe there's some agreements, BLAs, which are HOA, owned by the HOA, so maybe this isn't something that we can really move around. But just like that repaving remainder of the 2019 work is on a B-list, I would really see, like to see all of the projects under Parking and Transportation Fund projects, which I see comes from the Excise Fund. I would like to see all those go forward before I would really worry about that repaving the Wellington neighborhood. I understand that it needs to be done, but, I mean, it looks like it's in really good condition. I know that it's a patch, but I don't know if there's any way to move that, or you don't have an appetite for that.
The one thing I would say about that, Kelly, obviously you want to make the neighborhood whole, but we have that $500,000 in prior spending authority. We've saved that from fiber already, so that's not coming out of Excise. I know that's kind of tit-for-tat, because it's all the town's money anyway, but that wouldn't necessarily free up additional funds, because that's already been allocated to the fiber project.
Okay.
That makes you feel better, Kelly?
I mean, sure.
I mean, we can move it from fiber to do something else, absolutely, but it's, I just wanted you to know that that money has already been allocated.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking a little bit about what Dick said, and moving some of these other ones, like the Riverwalk and pedestrian connection. If it comes to moving that one to a B-list, I would rather look at reallocating the money from the Wellington neighborhood, because I feel like that's a real loss to the community, whereas moving the money from the Wellington neighborhood, putting it off a year, I mean, it's already all paid.
So let me, I think what'd be nice to hear from you is if there's anything on this five-year plan that you have a problem with. Because I could tell you right now that the funding for '21 capital is not gonna be an issue, all right? It's, it's just, it's low enough, there is enough, we will be fine, we will be totally fine. We can, we have a lot of room to absorb this, what to have. So when you see the budget, if you have additional concerns, you'll have an ability to whack something off of here if you need to, but you won't, you won't have any concerns on '21 at all. And '22, with what we have allocated right now, even with a $10 million spin that's out there on that stuff, we can, we're absorbing it with our current fund balance, the way we're, under council policy, just fine. So we don't have any needs to, we're not looking at this time to make any additional cuts on anything on here to get in under that fund balance window. So I think when you see this in relation to the full budget in a few weeks, you know, I think you'll be able to look and say if you feel like something needs to come up. I don't think that's the case. I think more importantly, you would, you would question right now whether this is a project we should even be doing or not, so.
I, you know, I think by January, we're gonna know, we are gonna know what this season is looking like. We'll know what, you know, December's gonna be the tell for where we are. And, but, you know, in January, if there are projects, if we have a strong November and December, and things are going fine, and we're, you know, we're sort of meeting some of the marks that we think, you know, we're not down more than the 40%, we can, we can always add some projects in. This is not, you know, the death knell. We can move some projects from years down the road up if we feel that, that that's gonna happen. I don't have that... that that's going to happen. I I don't have that optimism right now for this winter, but I would rather err on the side of caution and then have people say later, that was stupid, it was a good winner, than the other way around, so.
This is exactly what happened this summer, right? Yeah. It's always better to go back and say, well, we cut more than we needed to. Uh, because you never know, and you can add a sidewalk. If you decide you want to do a sidewalk next summer. Uh, you know, in the spring, assuming we can get a contractor. Because winter is done, okay, we can add it, right? So we can make that decision then.
So I'm hearing this is good. We're going to add in the $45,000 for solar. And then we'll have another check in with council in early February. About where we are to make sure this is still the plan we want to move forward with in 21. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, Shannon, I I'd like to actually move that up from early February into January if we could.
Okay.
Because we will know, I mean, we'll know in January where we are. And this way, if there are projects we want to bump up, if we do want to do a sidewalk, you can get it out to bid then in February.
Yes, that'd be great, Eric, because it's desirable to get people under contract in February and very beginning of March.
So let's let's try that. Everybody good with that strategy?
Yeah.
Uh, one last thing, I'll just remind you that the biggest, one of the biggest decisions we're going to have to make is if we're not, uh, what happens with our litigation in reference to the Blue River?
Yep.
Frustration that failed on us and you, you know, that's in here at $4.5 million. And so right now, we're hoping that, you know, that's covered under some type of warranty type thing, but uh, if it ends up, you know, if we're not successful in that, uh, we have an obligation. Um, to fix that, and so, you know, then then that whole 20 year twen- and they wanted that done in 21. Uh, the Army Corps was pushing hard for us to do that and we were able to push it out another year because of COVID. So they're not going to let us push that very far. Uh, beyond 22, so.
All right, any other questions on CIP? This is really the first whack at where we're going with budgets, so. You know, we can change things as we go and then in January, we can definitely change things. All right, good. Uh, we have an exec session. If anybody needs a quick five, we can do that and come back and go into executive session.
And how do we do that? We go to a go to meeting or something?
Yeah, there's a. You can.
Shannon sent that to you earlier today.
Oh, yeah.
So first though, you'll have to, if you're not going to make the motion for the exec session before you take a break, then you have to come back to Zoom. Make your motion, then get off of Zoom and go into go to.
Let's make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I moved at the Town Council going to executive session pursuant to paragraph 4E of section 246402 CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. Second, someone else?
Motion has been made for the Town Council to go into an executive session pursuant to paragraph 4E. Section 246402 CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may subject to, may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. Subjects of the executive session are number one, a confidential discussion concerning the town's health insurance program. And two, a confidential discussion concerning the potential development of the North Gondola Lot property. Roll call.
Ms. Taddy?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Yella?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Okay.
How long do we have before we click back on?
Five minutes. Run. Wash your hands, Jeffrey.
Do we log out here, Shannon, or we got to leave this one?
Are we going to leave or are we just going to be put on hold?
I'm going to leave and I'll come back.
All right, Shannon's already gone.
So I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave too.
We have a couple of minutes if you guys need to take five and we have nine minutes actually before we start.
So Dick, Dick, um, how do you want to do this tomorrow? Do is like a FaceTime or what do you, how do you do? What do we do? You had muted.
Um, we could do that, or we could just put our phones on speaker and just both look at the spreadsheet and just kind of go through it.
All right. Yeah. Do you know how to do FaceTime? Have you ever done that?
I've done it. Yeah, we could do that. That's fine.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. Call me on FaceTime. I'll answer on FaceTime. We'll try that first.
All right, cool.
Jeffrey, where are you guys going this weekend?
You know, we're going to go south. Um, yeah, maybe towards uh New Mexico, Southern Colorado, then flip around and go to Utah and kind of chase the Aspens. Friday is our anniversary.
Nice.
Yeah.
How many years?
She's a lucky girl. Uh, 27.
Wow.
Yeah, that's the, I think that's the rubber anniversary.
So you're gonna get her new tires?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's an option. Yeah, I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna take off for a while. Well, we'll see. We'll see what happens. You know, the, what the weather's like. But yeah, we're gonna um do a big old loop, maybe not go down towards Del Norte and then cut across and hit Utah and, you know.
What is the town in Utah where um Bowder ended up?
Oh, Turk got a place there. Uh, uh, Rich.
I think called it Lake Charles, but I don't think that's right. What is it?
Richmond. Uh, hang on one second. What is it? Uh, we, we've ridden there a bunch.
I knew the riding's really good there.
Yeah. Um, and it, there's a state park there, right near there. Not Richmond. Yeah. You know, we just, we just in Vernal, uh, and that was some amazing, that was beautiful, uh, before we came back. That's when Dennis, that's where Dennis, uh, high sided his camper and pulled off his, uh, his, his jacks trying to boondock.
Oops.
Yes, I did. Dennis, where does, where does that place that Turk has a condo at in Utah? What's that town?
Ian, Tom Bowder.
St. George, St. George. That's right.
St. George.
Yeah, that's right. Hey, so, oh, Rick's on the phone. So Rick and Shannon, we, we're gonna have another meeting next week in the morning?
Well, while the rest, who, who I got everybody here? I know Aaron said, I would like to do one on the 29th, okay? Tuesday, the 29th, and I'd like to do it at eight fifteen. And Tim, I know I told you earlier the six, but I was wrong because I forgot we had that fifth Tuesday. So, um.
Good.
Um, so anyways, I'd like to do it on the 29th and Aaron said earlier the better. So eight or eight fifteen would work for her. I'd need about an hour and a half, I'm guessing. And we'll have two topics that we would cover. The problem is when we go to October 13th, we're going to start doing budget and I want to break up the budget into two meetings also. So I'm at, I'm going to ask you for a special meeting on the 29th. And I'm going to ask you for a special meeting on October 20th. Tuesday morning. And I think we'll try to do, if mornings work best for everybody and Kelly can do mornings on Tuesday. She prefers eight fifteen. So. You guys, everybody good on the 29th and the 20th of October?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna, you know, I plan to go into a little more detail on budget with you guys and we're, we're getting some other items stacked on these agendas. And so, you know, I don't think any of us want to do an eight hour day on a Zoom meeting. So.
No, other than Jeffrey wants to, but nobody else does.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a long distance meetinger.
How long on the twenty, wait, on the 20th?
Um, I don't know. That one could be a little longer.
That'll be budget, Aaron. So.
Right.
Budgety.
Budgety.
Both those dates work for me, Rick.
Um. Depending on what we got done on the 20th, but it could be, it could be, uh, two and a half, three hours.
Oh. Okay.
We start at seven AM.
I would start at seven AM.
Why don't we do it, why don't we do it at Aaron's new house?
It's not, it's not big enough to allow six feet between.
Oh, we were trick or treating at Aaron's house.
Very interested in the alternate trick or treating. Is that where you throw candy at kids?
Slingshot. I did like the one way with the little bags of candy out on the lawn.
Yeah.
Little poop bags. Pink town's got a bunch of those pink ones. We hand those out. I'm telling everybody this was Jeffrey's idea with Halloween too.
Well, you know what? Uh, Carol's, she's a good, she's a good foil because she's the one that killed the fairy tale. That's why we call her a fairy tale. That's why we call her Broomhilder.
Thanks, Jeffrey. I figured you'd bring that up.
I'd like to know the rest of the story on that, Carol.
It was just her and me, her and me with a, with a hat, you know, remained strong on the fairy trail. Jeffrey, did you notice the two little fairy houses on the little extension trail in front of the Wellington?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I rode over them.
Hater, hater of children. Uh, one more minute here, gang, and we could roll through this tonight. Oh, that, there's the gong for the start of the meeting.
I like my time to be back.
Let me call this meeting to order with that gong, man. It is seven o'clock on the 22nd of September. Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Here. Mr. Carlton. Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Ms. Jello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Here. Uh, before we go to the next bit, I'd like to let anybody know that is in attendance. We will be doing the communications to council shortly. If you have something to say, you can email the mayor at townofbreckenridge.com or go to the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen and uh, we will get your comment to the council. If you have a comment on something that is part of tonight's business, you can also put that in the Q and A or the mayor's, uh, mayor@townofbreckenridge.com and we will read it at the appropriate time. With that, uh, minutes for the September eighth meeting, are there any changes, corrections, additions, deletions? No minutes stand as presented. Approval of the agenda, Rick?
No changes.
All right, we are now at communications to council. These are non-agenda items only. And like I said, please submit that. I'm gonna give an additional thirty seconds here for you to submit a comment if you would like.
And Mayor and Council, you received a communication via email earlier today that I sent to you from Dylan O'Connell. Helen has added that to the record, but Dylan was okay with us not reading it aloud this evening.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Shannon. Okay, that's thirty seconds. I'm gonna close the communications to council. We move on to continue, uh, no continued business. We'll move on to first readings, new business. And our first reading tonight is of Council Bill number thirty-four, series twenty-twenty, sin ordinance amending chapter one of title four of the Breckenridge Town Code known as the Town of Breckenridge Business and Occupational Licenses and Tax Ordinance Concerning the Suspension or Revocation of Licenses.
Tim? Yeah, this is me. Uh, from time to time, it becomes necessary for the town to schedule and hold hearings on the possible suspension or revocation of regular boat licenses as well as accommodation unit boat licenses. The ordinance currently provides that that hearing will be held by the Finance Director, Brian. This ordinance, if it's adopted, would change the hearing procedure so that instead of Brian being the hearing officer, the town manager or the town managers designate would be the hearing officer. And the thought behind this is to to create a situation where uh, the hearing officer is not directly supervising the employees who are presenting evidence at the hearings. Uh, it just struck, I think, everybody as being a little too, it made us uncomfortable for Brian in his job as Finance Director to be assembling the uh, evidence to be presented at the hearing, at least through his staff. And then he would also act as a hearing officer and, and be reviewing his own employees' uh, presentation of evidence, allowing Rick or Shannon, who would be Rick's designated, creates a little bit more of a buffer. I think it makes it more legally defensible. Um, and I, I'm personally would urge this ordinance to be adopted. I think it's necessary.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim this evening? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on the first reading of this ordinance? You have thirty seconds right now to go to the Q and A tab at the bottom of the screen or send an email to mayor@townofbreckenridge.com. All right, public comment period is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass on first reading, Council Bill number thirty-four, series twenty-twenty, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion by council? Roll call, please, Helen.
Ms. Jello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have a resolution number twenty-two, series two thousand and twenty. It's a resolution in support of Summit County's referred measure one A. Rick?
Mayor and Council, this uh, resolution would allow for your support of referred measure one A, which will be on the ballot this November from Summit, for Summit County voters to vote on. It basically is asking voters, if approved, to freeze the current mill levy on uh, residential property tax assessments, uh, in essence, degalgorizing the county. This has been done by um, most recently, the Red, White and Blue Fire District and also Colorado Mountain College. And so Summit County is one of, I believe, seventeen counties across the state that are asking a very similar question of their voters. Um, this will defer, uh, the plan is to defer a large decrease in funding um, with the way Gallagher set up, so.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Rick? Anybody in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Please do it in the Q and A function. You have thirty seconds or mayor@townofbreckenridge.com. And just as an FYI, this is just the council supporting this, uh, going on the ballot. We're not, we're not passing this. You gotta vote on it. So get some knowledge on Gallagher before you vote. Or talk to Dennis. He knows. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass, uh, resolution twenty-three, twenty-two, series twenty-twenty, a resolution in support of Summit County's referred measure one A.
Second, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion by council? No, roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Jello.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, motion passes. We have a resolution number twenty-three, series twenty-twenty. This is a resolution in support of the Colorado River Conservation District, ballot issue seven A.
Similarly to the last one, uh, this is a result of the um, lower assessment on residential would result in a significant loss of funding to the Colorado River District, which is an organization that serves fifteen counties on the western slope uh, to help with uh, water conservation, water protection, water flow issues. Uh, we've been a part of this organization for a number of years. We find them hopeful and supportive of of uh, those water values that we align ourselves with. Uh, we've been asked by Northwest Council of Governments, along with the Colorado River District, to a, do a resolution to support their ballot question. Uh, the difference in their ballot question, they're asking for a mill levy increase, which would result in a dollar ninety per residential stru- hundred thousand dollar value in a residential structure, so.
All right, any questions for Rick? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Please use the Q and A tab, but you have thirty seconds starting now. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution twenty-three, series twenty-twenty, a resolution in support of the Colorado River Conservation District's ballot issue seven A.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Jello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have a proclamation in support of Energy Efficiency Day that talks about energy efficiency continuing to be the cheapest and quickest and cleanest way to meet our energy needs, makes work spaces and homes healthier, safer, more comfortable, reduces the amount of electricity need to power our lives, lessens the pollution in our air, keeps our planet from warming too much. By improving energy codes for home and commercial, we significantly reduce utility costs, create new jobs. Town of Breckenridge supports these and has a goal of making a twenty percent reduction in electricity and get natural gas used by twenty-twenty. Through the Energy Smart Program and other utility efficiency programs, Breckenridge has saved a total of forty-two, four million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-two kilowatts of electric energy and fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-three thirns of natural gas since twenty-eighteen. Therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Eric Mamula, do hereby proclaim the day of October seventh, twenty-twenty is Energy Efficiency Day and call upon all residents of Breckenridge to join me in supporting the aims and goals of this effort. There you go. It's a reading without a full reading. All right, we move on to planning commission decisions. Any call-ups? For the one decision there was, no. Planning Commission Decision Stand as Presented. Report to the town manager and staff, please.
I have a few things to go over with you. Um, we already talked about Halloween, so uh, skip that one. And with the special meetings now, we are gonna look at September twenty-ninth, October twentieth. Uh, we can discuss more on the twentieth, how long that might be. Uh, Aaron, let me know where your constraints are gonna lie on that, okay?
Hey, so, Rick, the, the twenty-ninth is eight fifteen, right? Or do we move it earlier?
Um, we'd prefer eight fifteen on the twenty-ninth.
Okay, all right.
That would be an hour and a half.
Okay.
So on the twentieth, you're, are you saying three hours? How long? I mean, I would say.
Could be.
Eleven, I, I don't think I can go past eleven AM if possible.
Well, I, I think that's doable. All right?
Okay.
I think we'll plan eight till eleven. If we feel like we more, maybe seven thirty, but let's plan eight till eleven. We'll squeeze it in three hours. That's a good special meeting. I appreciate that. That'll really help us when we're finalizing whatever we need to do with the budget. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, is Riddlin, is Riddlin covered on our insurance plan?
No.
Add a replacement.
Shannon, did you get those times? I'm trying to talk to you. Um, all right, the, I'm also gonna try to do a ribbon cutting with just you guys at the, for the new water plant, so um, I know Aaron's gonna be out of town this sixth, starting on the sixth for a while, so we won't, but I'm gonna find time when we can get together for an hour at the most. I want to bring Gary and Wendy to that, okay? That first part of October-ish um, and do a ribbon cutting on our new water plant up there. The so we're scheduled to open um, Main Street on the twenty-eighth of, so this is the last full weekend coming up. The Main Street will be shut down. BCA would like to keep the solidarity mural up for another month, so they'd like to keep it up for the full month of October. Which would, which would cause us, we'd block off that block of Washington between Ridge and Maine. Which isn't, you know, a huge deal to us, but how do you guys feel about that?
It's fine.
Sure.
Some of the Ridge Street one hundred, two hundred block folks would be concerned with that, honestly. I've, I've heard concerns in the past from some of the folks up there around, you know, that access being blocked. And so, can we drive on it?
Oh, you could. It was, won't last very long, probably, so.
I mean, can we do two weeks? I just, you know, those are, you know, we're, we're getting ready to go inside and so that becomes pretty important, all those small businesses.
Yeah, you know what? I, I, I kind of agree with Dick. I mean, and I'll defer to Dick on this with those, those Ridge Street. But why, if we drive on it, won't it just, we're gonna remove it anyway? Or are we just gonna let it kind of?
I think we're just gonna let it uh, fade out, fade away. Yeah, wear and tear and winter and.
Yeah, I, you know, again, I am, I am very worried about this winter and I'd love to, I'd love to give the, any leg up I can for any business uh, after this good summer that I think the chickens are gonna come home to roost this winter.
With the solidarity mural, um, I'm wondering, and I swear this is connected, um, do we have some good photography of it so that it can live on and be placed somewhere? Maybe it could be placed some, somewhere public so that it uh?
Uh, we will check, but I would sure hope we.
Pretty sure Joe Cosamoto has a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, so maybe we could, you know, leave it closed for two weeks, but then have it visible somewhere or posted somewhere.
Be a great poster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would.
I mean, really, it's two weeks. What are we doing there? I mean, if we're really concerned about continuing to impact French and Ridge or anybody else, you know, I don't know what two weeks is buying us on this thing, honestly. Maybe everybody expects.
The people on Ridge and the people outside of the closure have been such great partners. I think that if we're done with the closure, let's just be done with the closure. That would be my preference. But yeah, and, and I, I totally agree, but maybe we, yeah, maybe we do post it as a poster. I mean, I know that there are fewer events going on, so there might be some good, good visibility where we can keep it alive.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, maybe BCA as a, as a fundraiser could, you know, get, get rights to, to create a poster of it and then, and then make it available to buy.
All right.
I'll buy one.
So we'll have them explore that, but we'll open it up at the same time we open up Main.
Okay.
Thank you on that. And the last thing was the townwide employee appreciation update that we've been talking about. Shannon had a quick thing on that because I don't really understand where we're at on this whole thing.
This one you kick over to me. Um, so when we had talked about this with you all a little while back, we were hoping, well, it was kind of a different concept. It was kind of maybe food vouchers and food trucks and that has really morphed into something that is much broader. A voucher, the intent is to do a voucher. Um, businesses would be asked to contribute five dollars per employee to help to free the cost. The voucher would be for fifteen dollars. Um, businesses could decide whether or not they wanted to accept it or not accept it, but then they would re, they return it to the town and we would reimburse them for ten dollars for every, businesses, ten dollars for every voucher. We have about sixty-seven hundred employees that are listed on the bolt list, so for every business, when they get their bolt license, they have to say how many employees they have and that's how we get to that number. That doesn't include like the BTO, the BCA, those kind of nonprofits, childcare's aren't in there, the town's not in there. So there's some additional folks who aren't actually on that list. If we open this up to everyone, which is what we're, you know, intending to do, with probably a little bit of steering folks to really understand that this is intended for the frontline employees, back house employees, it's not intended for like me, Dick, Rick, you know, you know, the people who are in more of those management type positions, it's really intended for the frontline workers. We don't think we're gonna get anywhere near sixty-seven hundred people. It's, you know, with, I think there's probably a thousand folks that are just scary employees that probably aren't working right now. We're intending to do this in the middle of October, so I think we're gonna get the employees who are here probably now and maybe even a few fewer of those. Um, but that said, my fear is that, you know, I think council said that thirty to forty thousand dollar number was good. It is possible. It is possible that we'll end up spending more than that. Um, so what I wanted to know is if council would be agreeable to say an up to. Sixty thousand dollars, which I don't think we're going to get anywhere near. I just hate to. Open it up to employees, which is what we're really trying to do, and then either have to put a cap on it. Um, or have to come back to you and say. We're going to be at X dollars. Um, it would certainly, we can do that either way. If we want to stick with the original, say, forty thousand dollar amount, and if we look like we're going to go over, I'll come back to you. Um, or if you want to give us the go-ahead to, to open this up like we had intended and then just kind of give you a synopsis at the end of. Of how it worked and what we spent. I can do that as well.
How do you guys feel about it?
I'd, I'd give them the, the leeway to. Make it happen, not have to come back for us for an incremental increase if it comes to that. You know, I, I, I trust the staff to be able to handle this efficiently.
Eric, Jeffrey.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm sorry, I have to confirm. So is it, it's a $15 gift certificate? Is that what they receive?
It's a, like a voucher, so they can take the $15 voucher and they'll be. Um, we haven't quite figured out exactly how we'll um. Delineate who's participating and who's not. I think Eric had the idea. We give them a flyer, and if you're a participating business, you put that up in your window. If you're not participating, you can put a different one up in your window so people know. Um, but they can go into pretty much any business that wants to participate, use their $15 voucher and then return it to the town. Um, they'd actually get reimbursed $15. I misspoke earlier. So they'd get reimbursed for the, for full $15 amount. Uh, but we are, like I said, we are asking businesses to spend $5 per person to participate.
Okay. Okay.
Makes sense.
It'll just be who's deliver, like, what's, what's the reception? Like, are they, is it coming from their employer? Is it coming from us?
The employer will have to go and buy them. And it'll be, you'll be able to buy as many as you have your, on your Bolt license. If you pay a Bolt license for 20 people, you get to buy 20 vouchers.
Okay.
Hopefully you'll do the right thing and not keep them for yourself, but you'll give them to your employees.
And I'm, I, I'm all about this, and I think yes, we, we approve the higher amount. Um, I would also just say, maybe we consider like. I don't, I was thinking about this and how, like, what a great feeling. Um, the, the mug day is, you know, wake up Breckenridge. And I know we can't do like mass gatherings, but if there's any like virtual way that maybe we could say thank you, or, you know, I don't know if like. We, we divide up businesses and council goes in and says thank you individually with masks on, or. I don't know, if we could personalize this at all from the, I know it's also, it's coming from the employers too, but if we could. Somehow send out that message to, to front, frontline workers and everybody that, you know, we really appreciate them and thank you for all that you do.
So we were planning a, a letter. Um. But I think maybe we could even reimagine that. Maybe it's a video. That we could push out with the council members thanking employees, so. Um, we have a meeting, a resiliency team meeting tomorrow. Um, we can talk about that and see. What we can come up with, but I think it's a great idea to hear, maybe even just hear from you all personally would be great.
Thank you.
Uh, Dennis? Good?
Update?
No, no, are you good with this?
Oh, I've already, I already said yes.
Dick?
Yeah, absolutely. The money's going back into our small business community, so I think it's well invested.
Carol? And Kelly?
Yep.
Alright.
Thank you.
That's all.
No, that wasn't as much as you threatened.
Well, it was very few.
Just one.
You're very gentle.
Reported the mayor and council. Um, you know, honestly, all I have is the, we had, did have a BTO meeting last Thursday. Listen, one of the things that I, I, I think there's a couple messages that um. We're, we're trying to push right now. The first one is this. Sort of be nicer than necessary, and then. That's just my, but that's a message I've been using on the, on the video logs, but this be nice message. I know Lucy is trying to get her handle on something. We've had. I think we've, you know, at this point in the season, like this point in a lot of seasons, at the end of a. You know, at the end of a busy summer, like the end of a busy winter, people start to get a little fried. And it's been worse just with the interaction with some of our guests over. Masks and social distancing, and it has been very difficult. So I have heard numerous complaints from guests about, you know, how they were treated places. So we really want to push out a message that, you know, really, we, we are in this together as. Humans and as a town, so really go out of your way to be nice. Really be nicer than necessary, and I think that's a message that, you know, the council needs to share whenever we can. That's number one. Um, number two, um, and, and this is not a, a me, this is something that actually. Um. I had a discussion with Dick about today. Brooke from one of the um, title companies told me today that they're like 200% of last year for home sales. That means there's new residents moving to the community that don't. Um, potentially have the necess, the, the same connections to the community. That we had and we've had, and that the people that they're displacing have had, and. I know that the Summit Foundation amongst other nonprofits are worried. That we're going to lose a connection to the nonprofits from some of the people that. You know, maybe they're only moving here for a year to get out of COVID country. Or maybe they are going to make this their permanent home, but somehow. We need some kind of outreach from. The council. That says, mu, moving in our community, if you have the means. You need to help us fund. What we do as a community, and that is FERC. Summit Foundation, Community Care Clinic, all the way to the NRO, Breck Music. I mean, we have a laundry list of things that we fund as a town. But they're really funded by the community and by the people that have lived in some of these neighborhoods. People like Gary Gallagher, honestly, who. Gave a lot of his time and money to a lot of organizations. And a lot of these organizations are worried now that we're going to miss that connection with a lot of people moving to town. Who through no fault of their own are going to be utilizing the, or, or realizing the fruits of the people that came before them. How do we engage them? How do we welcome them to community and then say, hey, by the way? This community's got great needs. The frontline workers have great needs, and we. We respond to those needs through these organizations. So just something to think about that Dick and I talked about today. Dick um, came up with an idea almost like a welcome basket sort of thing, you know? Hey, welcome, and by the way, so um, I, I think that's sort of in the next phase of things that we do as a council. This will be a very important one. Um, and then finally, I've been having some discussions with Aaron, who sent a great. Um, article about winter and winter outside dining activities and stuff, and it'd be great if she sends it to all of you. Because it's a very cool read. But one of the things that came out of it that I thought was really sort of a cool idea was having some fire pits. Potentially around town and maybe in like Blue River Park, uh, Blue River Plaza. And then maybe some of the restaurants could sell little smore kits. So kids would have something to do after dinner. You could get people back outside, be sort of in a fun um, event. And uh, there's some other really cool ideas in that um, article, so read that and, you know, we'll probably talk about this more resiliency tomorrow, where we're. Just trying to come up with things for people to do, especially after it gets dark. So that's what I got.
Eric?
Yeah.
You know, we applied for that uh, you know, C dot. Thing, you know, for different things you're doing. We got $50,000 to get those. Removable portable barricade things that we had cut out of the budget, but we can apply for round two, so we should. You know, we were considering, we may have already, we're going to apply for uh, try to get money for the increased walkability lighting along the river path. Because that had a, almost a $50,000 price tag, but. Um, we could also, you know, try to do heater type things.
Cool. That'd be great. Some of those ones that we've had before, the ones that look like. A fire pit that are gas, you know, or something like that would be great.
Yeah. Did we, okay. Where, where was the propane bottle?
It was near them. I mean, it wasn't. It wasn't too hidden.
But here, you, you see these, there's a couple of questions here.
Um, oh yeah, from Evan. Uh, you know, Evan, the reason, the, the 40 grand also part of this is an injection into. Into local businesses too, when it's, when it gets slow. That's really, that's really part of it also. Um, as, as, as well as being a gift to the. Or a, you know, a little thank you to the frontline workers. So that's, that's sort of where that came from. And it seems like the easiest way to distribute this thing, so that's why we went the way we did. Um, okay, and then when we get done with. With your committee reports now, we want to talk about, uh, if anybody wants to give anything up for Carol. Um, we're going to have three people on our equity group right now. We're going to have Aaron, Dick and Carol all be on the equity. But she does have some time, so if anybody wants to give anything up as they're going through this thing. Let her know. So uh, open space, Aaron.
Uh, we have a meeting on Monday, uh, but this. Not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, we worked on. Um, Trail Day, Little, Little Corporal.
Little Corporal. Little Corporal.
Charles there too. Um, but yes, you can see some of the turns that um, that we made. On this trail, which it's, it's hard work, but I highly um, recommend Trail Days. It's great.
Thanks, Aaron. Uh, tourism, Mr. Coon.
Um, I really don't have anything I would, I was hoping Lucy was going to be here to update, but if she isn't. Um, I would go to the Breckenridge Heritage Alliance.
Very good.
And. With that, um. Snapshot for what's coming up is Sally Barber Mine Repairs. Our God, which uh, which is for this winter, just a low-cost. Temporary stabilization of the structure that's at the top of Sally Barber. That could be started as early as this week with the help of Tony Harris. Uh, to coordinate and focus on the protection of the roof and the bin, so. That's really exciting news for every one of us that uses Sally Barber Mine and has been up there. Um. Also, there's a new archival collection to, on loan to the Heritage Alliance from featuring the work of John. And I know I'll kill his name, Toplenicki, I believe, and he was a famous um. Famous photographer here back in the nineteen sixties and seventies, and he captured the early years of Uller. The ski area, mine sites and downtown Breckenridge.
Where are those photos? Where are they, where are they, Dennis?
Those are um. Just captured in his collection coming to Breckenridge um. Through the BHA.
Okay.
I don't know where it's going to be um, displayed.
Okay.
Apologize for that. And then the BHA has some ideas for Halloween. That um, they were going to go out to the cemetery and do a Day of the Living Dead, not the kind of thing to scare people. Um, but more of a focus on the characters behind the tombstones, but. Um, I will make sure that Larissa knows about the CDC and um, I'll pass that on to her for what they have.
So it'll be family, uh, family-friendly Living Dead?
Family-friendly, correct, Jeffrey.
You're good. Nice, nice.
And that's, that's what we have for the, oh, uh, mediation will be coming up for the Summit Historical Society on October 8th. The mediation between the BHA and the Summit Historical Society, that's.
Can't wait to hear about that.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent, thanks Dennis. But uh, no water task force, creative arts, who's uh, who's that, that now? Nobody.
Kelly, you want that one, or? We actually didn't have a meeting. Um, Kelly and I have both been doing a bunch of onboarding trainings and such to, to try to get up to speed. But no meeting.
Okay. Uh, events, Dick?
Uh, also no media. I think we went over the previous meeting at the, at the last one. Um. You know, there's a number of ancillary groups out of that that are doing work, but um, Shannon updated on the, on the party.
Awesome. Uh, childcare, Kelly, anything?
No, we haven't had a meeting um, recently.
Alright. Uh, housing, anything to add?
Just, just great work on that whole maintenance piece. Nicole and, and Laurie are. Have been working really hard on it. I mean, we put, a lot of discussion went into that prior to coming to you guys, and the staff has really driven it and done some great work with it.
Awesome. And anything to uh, add on the Social Equity Advisory Committee, um, the three of you? Where we are?
Uh. We're working on a, well, Carol uh, drafted a call for applicants and as a group, we decided on. Uh, which is great. It's um, nearing, nearing its final draft. Um, and then also we decided for. At least this round of applicant, applications to have an online piece. There, there have been a few um. A few nuggets from the Equity Project and from our conversations that have raised, risen to the top as far as how we've been doing things and how. We may consider doing things in the future, like. If we, if we translate our applic, if we translate our call for applications into Spanish, well, then we should offer. Spanish translators at the interviews and at meetings and things like that, and so just, I mean, which makes sense, you know, now when you think about it. But to think of every step of the process of building a commission like this and trying to make it all fair and equitable, you see. Some of the gaps already that, that we've, we've. Un, you know, unknowingly or un, not thinking about it, but just have assumed things, so. Um, so there's that, and also having an online application and not assuming that people will provide their resume or provide, you know. Just what that means when we request people to send things in and the position that it puts them in, and so. I think it's great. Um, I think we're, we're making a lot of progress and um. Carol offered up and we, we discussed a timeline and how to move forward and thinking that. Hopefully, we'll put out a call for applications, people will apply, and hopefully we'll have the commission. Up and running um, January of 2021.
Sweet.
Nice.
That's awesome. Okay. Um, anybody want to give anything up for Carol? Alright, well, think about it. She's bored. But you guys are doing all the fun stuff without her.
I don't have much I could give up. You could paint my house.
No, thank you.
Oh, uh, Dick and I are doing grants tomorrow.
Oh.
And, and so, yup.
Uh, any other matters? Dick?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Um. Uh, Carol and I walked the uh, the cut area by Wellington. Last week, this previous week, and uh. I was really impressed with how thoughtful. The planning of that was, you know, the, there were foresters from CSU there, there was Forest Service. And, and, and their open space, Carol from open space, so. Um, and it really struck me just, you know, how careful they were with the different prescriptions, the different cutting prescriptions. And um. You know, just really struck me the benefit of, of the three groups coming together and working. Um, you know, that being Forest Service, Breckenridge Open Space. And County Open Space and Joint Open Space, I guess, four, and um, you know, it allowed the planning to, to not have. Orders and lines between the property owners and, and they really could use the topography to um. To design the cuts in the different prescriptions, so I, it just, you know, it, it's going to be impactful. But I think it's going to be important for, for both. Fire lines as well as for forest health and um, it was very impressive. Secondly, I had a, a, a friend come to me with, with real concerns around. Um, and, and that they had heard that the Breck Ski Area was not going to sell parking passes this year. And um. You know, it kind of struck me that that could be concerning to us because I think the locals will end up poaching Main Street. And uh, the other spots around town that we're trying to avoid so much. So I don't, you know, I don't know if we, yeah, obviously that's a private business and we don't. Have jurisdiction or to want jurisdiction over what they do, but maybe we could encourage. Even if they did a limited use parking pass for locals for. You know, a lot of these folks just ski for two hours. even if they did a limited use parking pass for locals or, you know, a lot of these folks just ski for two hours kind of thing. They could possibly sell that spot twice. And, but I'm, I'm concerned about how that will impact our, our guest parking. So that's it.
Yeah, that's a good concern, Dick. Uh, Kelly? Anything?
Uh, the only thing I've been asked about that I'd like to follow up on is if, if local businesses are interested in putting up a tent. There is some question on like, is there a permit process or an application process already available to them? And is that on the town of Breck website or the planning website?
It is already available and it, you gotta go through community development. We are waiving all permit fees.
Great. So do they just call?
Unity Development.
Unity Development?
Yeah. I think it's just a class D. I don't know if any of the planning staff is on, but I think it's just class D permit. You know, you still gotta get fire sign off and building inspector sign off. But other than that, I, we're trying to make it as painless as possible.
Chapin is the contact in ComDev.
Great. Thank you very much.
Uh, Jeffrey?
Uh, nothing. Just wanna say good government tonight.
Dennis?
I'm good. Thank you.
Carol?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
And Erin?
Um, I have one. So somebody from the census called me. I filled out the census. And then I guess they call you, they call ten percent of people just to verify the information. So as I'm talking to him, he was like, oh, you're on Breckenridge Town Council. I have some thoughts. And, uh, his, he, uh, is, you know, obviously he's working for the census, so he's very much a big supporter of the census. And I said, yes, well, we are too, you know, whatever we can do to support. And he was like, well, I'm really glad you said that because they're running into issues with property management. Hopefully I'm getting this right. They're running into issues with property management companies not allowing them to talk to people to verify within lodging properties. Now, typically, and I, I asked, I said, well, you know, hopefully the town is helping you with, you know, which units are short term and which, which are not. And he said, the town of Breckenridge has been fantastic to work with. They've been, they've been great to work with and our compliance is high. Uh, which is great. Good news. But I think that there are some in these lodging properties. And he actually used me, myself as an example of how I lived in a, a lodging property that was predominantly second homeowners and short term rental renters. I was the only long term renter there. And so he said that there was no way for me to, to contact you except for, anyway, I don't know if there's anything we can do. It's something to consider if there's anything that we can help with, because I know it's really important that we have an accurate census.
Rick or Shannon, is that something you can look into?
Yeah, we, I mean, Peyton is our liaison on all things with the consensus and, you know, her ties to the lodging community. Would surprise me if they're not addressing, but we'll make a note and ask about it.
And I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do. It's just, because I don't know that we can make lodging properties allow act, when there's multi-units to allow access. It's not like allowing access inside the unit. Or maybe it's education to HOAs that all this information is confidential. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good one though, Erin. Alright, um, Tessa just said the lodging roundtable's meeting tomorrow morning. She will bring this up. So there you go. Anything else for the good of the order? No? Awesome job, everybody. Appreciate it. And we are adjourned.
Peace out.